This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. Today is Wednesday, November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one. I would like to call tonight's city council meeting to order. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
(inaudible).
Clerk, can I have the real call?
Councilmember Keeler?
Here.
Councilmember Hill?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Present.
Councilmember Strobin?
Here.
Councilmember Servini?
Present.
And Mayor Thornton?
Present. Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. If there are no requests for any items to be removed, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we do have a presentation this evening. Clerk, please put the photos of the two plaques up on the screen, please. Okay, so, yes, this evening will be the last city council member for two of our council members, Councilmember Dennis Hill and Councilmember Justin Keeler. You may recall that Dennis Hill was appointed by the city council earlier this year when the council seat was vacated by Councilmember Stimel. And Councilmember Keeler was appointed just a few months ago when Councilmember Boff resigned his city council seat. So, this evening will be their last meeting. I just want to take this opportunity to thank them both. Dennis, he served on the Planning Commission before being appointed to the Los Center City Council. He served on the Planning Commission for nearly nine years. And Dennis worked tirelessly with the other planning commissioners on many important issues over the past nine years, spending, volunteering countless number of hours to talk and discuss and pass policy or advance policy for the city's codes and subarea plans and multiple projects the planning commissions work on. For those of us that have served on both the Planning Commission and the city council, I think we can all agree that the commitment to the Planning Commission is a huge commitment. Sometimes those meetings run into the late hours of the evening, and the time commitment is really pretty extensive, and there's a lot of heavy lifting that goes on at the Planning Commission. But Dennis, I really do want to thank you for all your time and efforts on the Planning Commission and your time here on the city council. Didn't really change much for you. You were very committed to the city council. You contributed the entire time you were on the council. You represented the city both at the CTRAN board as well as the Ridgefield Port District. So you went above and beyond, and you represented the city with going outside the city and working with or joining jurisdictions and agencies. So Dennis, I really appreciate all the work and efforts that you have contributed to the city for this past, I don't know, be over nine years. So it's much appreciated.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'll just read your plaque presented to Councilmember Dennis Hill in recognition and appreciation of your service and dedication to the citizens of Los Center. It's a Los Center City Council term, two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-one. And we don't have the plaque. I can't present you the plaque this evening, but I will definitely get them to you here in the near future, Dennis, or get it to you in the near future.
Thank you.
And also this evening, we did Councilmember Keeler's last meeting. Councilmember Keeler's time on the council has been short, but his contributions have been many. He worked with the city, working through the two thousand and twenty-two budget. We've been having many discussions regarding moving forward with different policy options for the Los Center Police Department. And he's been a great contributor and has asked great questions. He's done his homework. He's, again, he's been very involved in his short time here at the council. And I truly do hope, Justin, that you will continue to be involved with the city and that you will stay active with the city and do not become a stranger. And we appreciate all your efforts and work. And I'll just, I just want to read your plaque as well. Councilmember Justin Keeler in recognition and appreciation of your service and dedication to the citizens of Los Center. So again, thank you to both of you, and it's much appreciated. Next on the agenda is citizens' public comments. Clerk, do we have any public comments this evening?
Yes, I believe we have five comments. There might have been a sixth one that came in. All right. Nelda Perryman, eight-two-four East Pioneer Loop, L.C. Mayors, Council, and Citizens, what is your reasoning to push through the vote tonight on next year's proposed budget? Why wouldn't you involve the new city council or the new council members since they are the ones that will be dealing directly with this proposed budget? This type of action does not project transparency. Please delay this vote since the new council members are literally days away from taking office and representing the overwhelming vote of Los Center citizens. Thank you. What Los Center really needs is their police department back, officers who are in town all the time patrolling. Clearly, the criminals are aware that we have no police presence now, and people's homes are being invaded, cars are being stolen, crime is happening all over. This is unacceptable. We moved to this town four years ago because it was a place that still had solid hometown morals, a close community where people help each other, pride in America, and a quote-unquote "country way of life." This is being pulled from our grasp daily. Allowing our city and rural areas to have no police presence is going to turn this into Portland. The homeless and criminals are coming to this area quickly, and it needs to be stopped before everything that made this community great will be ruined. Bring back our officers, we deserve to be protected. Brittany Witt-Kenak. To whom it may concern, I would like to submit my public comment in regards to the plan for a pedestrian path along Pacific Highway. I applaud the city's decision to protect increased foot traffic from the new subdivisions under construction that is already evident. I am appalled by comments from the community voicing negativity that the pedestrians should simply be discouraged by allowing this high-traffic zone to remain unsafe for our town's children. I am hopeful the city's plans for this project will be well-budgeted and well-executed. Thank you for your time. Jennifer Rose, four-one-five West Seventh Street, Los Center, Washington, nine-eight-six-two-nine-three-six-zero-nine-nine-one-nine-one-seven-six. City Council comments, November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Jack Davis, fifteen-twenty-four, West Alder Place, Los Center. Over the years, it has become increasingly evident that Los Center, despite spending over forty percent of its budget on the police department, was unable to provide the coverage the taxpayers thought they were getting. It is a very small department with no opportunity for advancement. Despite competitive pay and excellent benefits, turnover or personnel was high with officers, including our former chief, Mark Denny, understandably leaving for better opportunities elsewhere. Sick leave, vacation time, military leave, and resignations constantly resulted in high overtime costs. Chief Richardson, the mayor, and this council have worked diligently to find a solution. At the city council meetings on October twenty-seventh and November third, Chief Richardson, in conjunction with the Clark County Sheriff's Office, CCSO, presented a plan that will provide better law enforcement coverage for Los Center than they have had in the past at the affordable cost to the taxpayers. People enjoy twenty-four-seven coverage by CCSO patrol officers and a sergeant based at our Los Center Police Department office during the work week. There will be no gaps in coverage we experienced in the past with sick leave, vacations, et cetera. The implementation of this arrangement should be a no-brainer. I ask this council to go on record tonight endorsing this plan so we can get back as soon as possible to the effective law enforcement our citizens deserve. Thank you. From Sally Alkazin, one thousand East Heritage Loop, Los Center, Washington, nine-eight-six-two-nine, to mayor and city council members. Tonight's meeting is scheduled to have a vote on the two thousand and twenty-two Los Center city budget. As a taxpaying citizen, I would ask that you delay this vote until the next city council meeting, where we will have two new city council members that could weigh in on this vote. Since these newly-elected city council members will have to live with this budget, it would seem fair that they would be able to vote on it. Last year's budget was voted on December, so what's the rush here? It would appear that the current officials want to push it through without allowing our new elected city council members to vote on it. If this is not the reason for proposing this, but this, proposing for this vote now, then what is the reason? Sally Alkazin.
That concludes the public comments.
There's one more.
Okay.
Our mayor. To the City of Los Center elected workers, including the mayor, all city council members, and all employees of Los Center. One, I, we the people, are demanding an answer to this question. Are any above-mentioned workers, members of ICLEI or local governments for sustainability or belong any other membership of any sort other than church, college, et cetera? Two, the agenda mentioned for tonight's council meeting, one point five presentation of proclamations, especially one point five point one proclamation of emergency. We the people demand having in-person counsel in all meetings in person, transparent, and we demand you stop this illegal mandate now. Inslee is guilty of felonies now, and his illegal and inhumane acts towards Washington citizens is going to stop. We are gathering to fight the good fight, and we will be in full force as our forefathers in the past. All the while, you try to enjoy your Thanksgiving, Christmas days off duty. We intend on filing individual lawsuits to those that are not constitutionally representing the people and who have disregarded their oath to office under the Washington Constitution. Three, we the people want the City of Los Center to stop masking our children now. We will be presenting legal documents to support our demands for each above, for each above subject issues. Open the city, be transparent, stop all mandates now. Kimberly Alvin, unityisachild@gmail.com, six-one-three-E-Six Street, Los Center, Washington, nine-eight-six-two-nine. We will prevail. And that is all.
Thank you, clerk. Well, next on the agenda is the mayor's report. I do have a few items that I'd like to share with the council this evening. First, the offices will be closed on Thursday and Friday, November twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, in observance of Thanksgiving. Just, next city council meeting will be on Wednesday, December first. That's a chance, schedule, so the next city council meeting again will be on Wednesday, December first. My next mayor's town hall will be on Thursday, December sixth, at six-thirty P.M. And everyone is welcome to join my mayor's town hall. It will be a virtual town hall again this time, and you can get the link to the town hall on the city website. It's right on the front page or cover page of the website. Also, just a reminder that Sunday, December fifth, beginning at four-thirty P.M., the city will have its annual tree lighting ceremony and festival. So again, it will be starting at four-thirty this year. It'll be the tree lighting. Then the, well, the Christmas festival in conjunction with that, and we'll all enjoy Santa Claus and all the activities that go along with that. So, been a couple of years since we've done that. I'm really looking forward to being able to do that again this year. We hope to see everybody come out for the Christmas festival. And I also want to just send out a big thank you to the Los Center Public Works Department. They've been putting up Christmas decorations in around the city for the past couple of days. They were decorating the Christmas tree today. They got most of the decorations up on all the city facilities, Los Center Road, and the city's really starting to look great. So I appreciate the Public Works team doing that, and we'll all get to enjoy those Christmas decorations here for the next several weeks. So thank you to the Public Works Department for that. And finally, I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. And for those of you that'll be traveling this Thanksgiving, I just want to wish you safe travels in whatever, wherever you're traveling and a safe return back home. That's all I have this evening for the council. Next on the agenda is the attorney's report. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Council, the public. I'm going to take enough of the council's time and sessions tonight, so I'm going to forego any report tonight, other than I wish everybody happy holidays and like to express my appreciation for the service of council members, Hill and Keeler. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Next are council member comments. Councilmember Keeler?
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to take a brief moment at the, my last city council meeting to say thank you to the city staff that I've had the pleasure to meet with and learn from. I am very grateful for your professionalism and your dedication to our community, and I really appreciate the easy access that you provided to me to learn from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got several things to share this evening. First, I want to say hello to welcome to the city council, the mayor, and the citizens of Los Center. It has been my pleasure to serve as your councilman for the past eleven months. Tonight is my last official meeting as your councilman, but I still plan to be involved in the city in some way. We have a great city, and I want to be, I want to do my part to ensure that we have a bright, prosperous, and safe future. The Center is very fortunate to have a dedicated city council and mayor who have worked very hard on behalf of the citizens of the Center. It has been my pleasure to work with our city staff and our police. They have all done an outstanding job in keeping our city operational, maintained, and safe. Thank you. It is my hope that the incoming council members bring with them the dedication to the job that our three outgoing counselors have. As the citizen of the Center, I will be expecting nothing less. Good luck to all three of you. I have a report just briefly here on the Port of Ridgefield. In December, they'll be voting on redistricting, actually resizing the districts within the Port District, Ridgefield Port District. So we'll be hearing about that. I don't think that's going to impact the Center very much. For those who do not know, as you go up Los Center Road to the junction, portion off to your left, the south portion of that road there is part of the Port District. And so they support us in that regard. The second item is CTRAN. And in December, the Board of Directors is going to be voting to do a fare reduction for local service and express services. Local service is going to go from one eighty-dollar, one dollar and eighty, down to a dollar, and then the express service is three eighty-five down to two fifty. So that takes place, we think, probably in January, first part of January. So that's a, that's a big thing for anyone of you that are involved in using the bus system within our county. Thirdly here, I want to read this because I don't have it memorized. The current Los Center City Council has been working diligently to create a stable work, police presence in our city. Over the past eight or nine months, Chief Richardson, the mayor, and Jeff Swanson, along with the city council, have been working very hard to come up with a workable solution to provide the citizens of the Center with the very best professional law enforcement services that are sustainable and affordable. At our little city council workshop on November third, all council members present gave their thumbs up on proceeding with the negotiations with the Clark County Sheriff's Office. Contracting with the Clark County Sheriff to provide law enforcement services for the Center and our immediate neighbors in the North County is a big win for our community. This contract would provide guaranteed three patrol shifts operating twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and would be stationed out of our current Los Center Police Department facility. This is a staffing level we didn't experience with our own police department due to vacancies, training, vacations, and sick leave. Not only would we have twenty-four-seven onsite protection, which includes an onsite sergeant who would act as a chief, but we would also do this for at least five hundred thousand dollars less than having our own fully-staffed and fully-funded police department, which is another big win for the city. Having the Clark County Sheriff being responsible for policing in Los Center would also mean that the sheriff would be responsible for officer liability, recruitment, state training mandates, and all administrative functions associated with managing a police agency. CCSO would provide career development and promotional opportunities that increase officer retention, which is a big thing these days, something that the LA, that the Los Center Police Department would not be able to provide. In a short period of time, policing has changed dramatically. Personnel costs, as well as the operational costs, are increasingly, are increasing to meet the requirements of state mandate police reform laws, as we all have heard about that. This is also compounded by the anti-police sentiment and other factors that are making it increasingly more difficult to recruit and retain qualified police officers. Our neighboring communities are now offering bonuses of ten to twenty thousand dollars and provide more future career opportunities to new officers than we can here in Los Center. Even our proposed two thousand and twenty-two budget that we are voting on tonight has a three hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-four-dollar deficit that would have been one point three million-dollar deficit without the use of the ARPA funds. And these are the federal stimulus funds in the amount of four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and that's going to go away soon. I believe contracting out our law enforcement services to CCSO would allow the city to save potential revenue while we wait for a stable economic and policing environment and reevaluate our own police department at a later date based on increasing our city revenue substantially. We need more revenue coming in. I personally would love to have our own police department, but in reality, we are facing the costs of additional police reform mandates, uncertain economic future, increased inflation, and the potential of additional COVID impacts on our local businesses. Thank you for allowing me to share my thoughts regarding law enforcement services for Los Center. I am truly in favor of a strong police presence in our community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hill. Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to again thank Public Works for the Christmas ornaments. I saw them going up, starting yesterday, I was out, and they were working on. Also want to thank them for the cleanup after our fall event here with the leaf drop. I saw the city sweeper out there work in some of the areas, keep our town clean. It's great to have public works operators that can run our, our big sweeper. Also want to thank Councilmember Hill and Keeler. Councilmember Hill, I've had the pleasure of working with you on the Planning Commission for the past, well, Planning Commission and City Council for the past ten years, I think, and, or plus or minus. But it's been a great pleasure working with you. I appreciate your integrity and your knowledge. I think a lot of that comes from your background, being a Marine. Semper Fi there, brother. And Councilmember Keeler, thank you for stepping up when Councilmember Boff left and offering to fill that position, albeit possibly short as it is. But nevertheless, you, you filled it, and you did it in a very professional manner. Thank you again, and I hope that you stay involved with the city. That's all I have tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Strobin? Councilmember Strobin?
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you now.
Oh, there you go. Sorry, guys, I'm having computer issues. Yeah, I wish, I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. I want to wish Councilmember Keeler and Councilmember Hill well in the future. I'm sure that we'll see you guys around in the city. You've been involved for a very long time, Dennis, and you've been a good person to work with. Mr. Keeler, I haven't had the pleasure of working with you much. Your input has been valuable in the meetings that I've attended with you. So I do wish both of you very well. I think that's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. And then Councilmember Servini?
Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to express my appreciation and gratitude for Councilmember Hill for your years of service on both the Planning Commission and the city council. I've always enjoyed working with you, bouncing ideas back and forth, sharing, you know, insights and comments and learning from one another. It's always a valuable experience. I think that each of us on the council enjoy that civil discourse and coming to solutions that we all can agree work well for the community going forward. Councilwoman Keeler, I appreciate you having the motivation and the incentive to step forward and fill the vacancy. And as everyone has already mentioned, you've brought up very thoughtful and very well-considered questions at each of the council meetings and put in your, your time to learn about each of the aspects and the projects and things that are coming before us and represented the city with very high integrity and respect. And I found that very refreshing from both of you, and I look forward to continuing to work with each of you. I know you'll continue to keep your hands involved with different city projects in the future as well. I too would like to express my appreciation to the Public Works Department for that, not only the keeping the, the leaf, leaves under control and all of the waterways clear, but also the city Christmas decorations. I think they're always uplifting and help the community come together and celebrate the season. So thank you there as well.
Mayor, could I add something, please?
Absolutely.
I also wanted to, well, I forgot in my initial dialogue, I wanted to reach out to Randy and Justin also, and particularly just thank them for serving alongside with me during these past months. It's all been exciting, and again, I want to just thank both of you for working beside me over these months, and best to both of you in the days to come. Thank you, and, and happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Okay, thanks, and thank you, Councilmember Servini. Okay, next on the agenda are staff reports. We have a few staff reports this evening, and the first staff report will be the finance staff report, and Maria will be presenting that this evening. Maria.
Good evening, Mayor Thornton and City Councilmembers. The October sales tax disbursement was seventy-four thousand, eight ninety-nine, which is compared to sixty-seven thousand, three thirty-one a year ago. We have hired Desi Ellinger Nelson as our strategic specialist. Desi has been a temp with the city since May and was instrumental in helping us receive our records grant. We have also hired Katrina Agarcheva as a customer service representative. Both new hires bring a wealth of government experience and knowledge, and Desi has worked for the Department of the Interior as well as Kaminia County Auditor's Office, and Katrina was previously employed with the City of Vancouver Police Department and Clark County District Court as a record specialist and court assistant, and she will start with the city on December first, and Desi is already on board with us. The city has donated twenty-three office chairs for folding tables, a small round table and two white solid chairs to Boy Scout Troop Three-O-Seven in Kalama. This was surplus from the new city hall building that the city could not use, and per are disposing a surplus policy, section four point one, since the value is less than one thousand dollars, no action is needed by the council, but I just wanted to make you aware of that. I recently attended the AWC Cities on Tap meeting. The upcoming legislative session was discussed during that meeting. The gambling tax revenue for October was just over a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. It does look like we will slightly surpass our budgeted amount this year. Are there any questions? We will go ahead and have, I'm going to bring on our senior accountant Riley Barbera, and he is going to give us an overview of the 2022 proposed budget before we do our public hearing a little later.
All righty. Let me get this pulled up here. So I'm going to keep this fairly brief. We've discussed these, this budget quite a bit already, and there have not been a whole lot of changes, but for all these citizens that may have missed those, well, still going to go through everything. So this is our budget for next year. On the revenue side, this was all gone over and approved last week at the meeting, so there really haven't been any changes to these ones. In our finance department, I think there was a couple slight changes based on kind of finalizing our staffing summary. The negotiations with the union for next year are still in process, but they're getting a little closer, so there was a couple small changes there. Legislative department, I think that was the same as it's been on our last one. The police department, I know we've gone over this kind of ad nauseam, but just a reminder that this is a, you know, budgeting for a fully-staffed police department, and it gets six officers, two sergeants, and a chief, records, and another part-time person, all in total. And then this transfer out is the purchase of two vehicles as well. The newly-formed municipal court department, this is what was previously the general government department. We just kind of took a couple small things out of there and left the bulk of it, they were all core costs, so we just kind of consolidated things a little there. In the community development and planning, there was a change in this one due to a clerical error on my part. We were allocating some funds between departments, and I missed a zero. That was due to the WSP one, so there hasn't been any changes to our actual expected expenditures or any changes to the contract or anything, so that was just a, a little error in the numbers there. Public Works, I don't think there was any, I think, I guess all of these departments that have staff will have a couple slight changes based on our staffing. This one does have a new employee in it, as we've discussed in the past, and this transfer out for a vehicle. The reserve fund still, you know, even though we were budgeting to have a deficit, the reserves in our general fund are not going to be exhausted, so we are going to be still having about four million dollars in this reserve fund. The impact fees, as I mentioned, these were the traffic impact fees, park impact fees, school impact fees, that's what all this money coming in for, and that's all construction-related, so great that it's, we're seeing high numbers there this year, but we don't know exactly how long that's going to last. And the capital expenditures, I'm just going to wrap that into this capital projects one on this next page. We've discussed this quite a bit, so this left column, that is if we are receiving any grants or any revenue related to these projects, and that the city funding is essentially the difference between what the expenditures are going to be and any grants that we might get in. And so these are some, you know, big numbers, but we've got some big projects coming up, and you know, that's, I would think, what all the citizens like to see their money spent on, stuff that you can really see around, around town, things that are making everything a little better. In particular, the sewer capital fund has this big sewer member expenditure, and so we're going to see that in a second when we get there. Vehicle Equipment Fund, we are going to be buying, I think, three vehicles in total, the two police ones we had mentioned, and then one for Public Works. The sewer operations, we're doing a much larger transfer out this year, which has largely why you'll see that deficit in here is transferring money to the capital, to sewer capital project or fund, just to take care of some of these big projects next year. And so that's this sewer capital fund here. We had to do some extra funding from it, more than we usually do from our sewer operations fund to make sure that we've still got some reserves in there. And again, that's seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollar sewer membrane is the, the bulk of those expenditures. Sewer debt service, you know, that's paying off alone. It's good to have those, the extra money coming in from these sewer development charges to help fund those future loan payments. And then Stormwater Fund, I don't think we had any changes there, other than very minor ones related to that, just staffing summary. And so here's the big picture look at everything that we have budgeted for what we are expecting to spend and how much we are expecting to get in. So you'll see that general fund deficit of about eight hundred thousand, but we'll still have about half a million in those reserves of the general fund, and you know, if we end up either going under our revenue expectations or over on our expenditure expectations by more than five hundred and forty-one thousand, that's what that reserve fund is for over there. So you know, even if things go, get a little expensive next year, we're not going to be going broke, and then all in all, total, you're still seeing a five hundred thousand dollar surplus. You'll see that over here in the far right column. And that's kind of all I got. If anybody has any questions, feel free to ask, or I can go back to the other pages, whatever you'd like.
Is this where we're going to discuss the budget then, before the, the official public meeting, or are we waiting until then?
Maria, that is, I'll let you answer that.
This will be the review of the budget right now, so if you have any questions on the budget, the public hearing is for the ordinance. But yeah, Councilmember Strobin, if you have any questions that pertain specifically to the budget, to Riley's presentation, I think now would be the appropriate time to ask.
Okay, perfect. So I'm, I'm a little confused on your guys' numbers for the police department. I've done some research in the last couple of weeks on my own. I've talked to and researched a few cities around the area and then outside of the area, and it seems like our numbers are extremely high compared to those cities around us, even up to Moses Lake, who does have a bigger police department, but they were awarded some officers in, they, they brought in seven new officers, vehicles, three officers, three detectives, an admin sergeant, and then they brought in a part-time IT tech and a part-time vehicle tech, and it was a increase of one point two million to their budget. So we were looking at nine officers, I believe?
That would bring our total to nine.
Yeah, brings the total to nine. So that city alone did it at one point two. I get that there's going to be differences in areas where they live and such. The city of Woodland, just alone in 2019, from the data that I pulled, and I actually went up and spoke with them, their budget in 2019 was one point seven million, and that was for twelve officers. With a population of six thousand and some change there. What I'm saying and what I'm getting at is that I, I feel that the dollars are kind of high compared to what I've been looking around and seeing in, in the areas. And I did an inflation calculation through the U.S. Department of Labor and Industries, and even if you did a one point seven in 2019, and in 2021, it's still only a hundred grand, right? And then I went back through and I looked at their different budgets for 2017, 18, 19, and 20, and the budgets increasing for the police department alone was staying within about twenty to forty thousand dollars. Yet for some reason, ours goes from one point six to two point one for nine officers.
So one of the things I do want to point out, Mr. Strobin, is that we did include, and if you remember, a couple meetings ago, we had a breakdown of what all was included in this budget, and so I don't know if Woodland was offering hiring bonuses to all of those employees, but there are hiring bonuses because we are bringing on a significant number of people. I believe that Ridgefield offered a twenty thousand dollar hiring bonus, and they were only able to recruit one person this past year. And then we also have expenses included in there for a hiring bonus for a police chief as well as moving expenses for a police chief, so those have all added up. Now, if we got fully staffed next year, the following year, the, but I could see the budget going down because we wouldn't have those additional expenses, and I know Chief is on here as well, and he worked really in detail with us to make sure that we had quotes and that things were accurate, and so if Chief has anything that he wants to chime in with, he can as well.
And I'm not finished yet, because I actually called Chief Denny, who had ran the department for several years here, and I spoke with him to find out what his opinion of that was as well, and he had stated that, and his professional opinion stated that we could be running this police department for one point six million a year. This does not include the, the signing bonuses, so I, I, I understand that part of it, right? Because it's a big challenge right now. I think it's a challenge for everyone. That doesn't include that, but this is somebody that was in this city and at this department for several years stating this, and then I bring this other data from other cities into this, and I feel that we are up a few hundred thousand dollars higher than what we should be in this budget.
Real briefly, as I was putting this together, I know there are certainly probably at least a hundred grand, I don't have the exact number of what those are of expenditures relating to new legislature this year. So you know, any comparables of 2017 to 18 to 19 to 20, 21 even, wouldn't have those factored in, you know, having to get all of the body cameras, all of the, you know, people to do records for those cameras, so on and so forth. You know, that's a decent chunk of change there as well.
All I'm saying is that I think that we can be saving a few hundred thousand dollars on this budget. That's what I'm saying in a nutshell, from my own research. And, and I'm not an expert, right? I, this is not my field of expertise. You give me a computer, I'll figure it out, but you know, just from my glancing through, this is what I'm coming up, and that's big money, especially with what Councilmember Hill brought up on the deficit in his statements. So I mean, if we can save a few hundred thousand dollars, that's huge for the city.
Okay, do you have any other questions, Councilmember Strobin, or comments?
No, that was it. Thank you.
Okay, so.
Mayor, I've got a question, too.
Okay, well, let me, let me address this one first. So first of all, Chief Richardson did go through a very detailed process for costing out what the true cost would be for a fully-funded, fully-staffed La Center Police Department, taken into consideration all the variable costs that currently are taking place, both with current legislation as well with the cost of the La Center, with the bargaining agreement with our union. So I don't know what these other jurisdictions have in terms of their commitments as a result of the collective bargaining agreements with their unions, and I really don't know. I mean, you say you took a quick glance at, at some things, very high level. I don't know how detailed your analysis was, Councilmember Strobin. Of course, you know, we could go through that process, but you know, we're way, way downstream for that. So with that being said, I would ask Chief Richardson to, you know, give his comments on, on what you've brought up this evening. Again, Moses Lake, I don't know how that's really a comparable. I'm not saying that it's not, but I don't know how that it would be a comparable or what the differences would be with the two jurisdictions, and quite frankly, Woodland is in Colletts County, they're not in Clark County, and I think there's some pretty significant differences there as well, so I don't know if they're really comparable, police departments with comparable cost structures and cost analysis. So let me, Chief Richardson, if you have anything that you might want to add before we take Dennis Hill's question?
Absolutely. Number one, let me explain that we went through, the two point one million dollar police budget is in the perfect scenario that we have to hire everybody that we need to hire and put them through the police academy, which means we have to buy uniforms, we have to pay for the police academy ammunition, all kinds of things. Now, that can be different, it could be lower if we just get lateral police officers. So that's one thing that's different. Number two is just our salary and benefit package. You have to compare that to what they're paying in Moses Lake or what they're paying in Woodland. The police department, our police department has no less lethal other than tasers, so there's money in there to provide three less lethal airsoft rifles, so we have some kind of intermediate less lethal other than a taser. There's money in the new budget for new tasers, body cameras, and vehicle cameras, so that's something we have to look at. I, I don't believe we could go from a budget of one point five to one point six million and run the police department. Remember, we're, we're adding another police officer, which is just in itself is about a hundred and twenty-five, hundred and thirty thousand dollars, plus we have to add a part-time employee for the, the body camera, somebody's got to have to process all of that, and we could, I could go on and on, but at the end of the day, at two point one million, we may not have to spend two one, two point one million, depending on how we hire and who we hire, but we have to have the money there in case we have to send people to the academy or we have to pull those equipment. And remember that even with this budget, we're not putting any money toward the new building, zero money to a new building that's fifty years old, antiquated, and has no female facilities for locker, these kinds of things. And this budget also has two new police cars, because if we add another police position, we have to have enough cars available so somebody, if one car is down, is in being repaired, that we don't have one officer in the station with no car waiting for another officer to go off duty to bring the car in that he needs to drive, but that officer is stuck on a call somewhere. So I think that two point one million dollars is realistic. I'm not the only one, you know, I've talked to Mark Denny before when he was chief here. He felt the police department was underfunded. If you talk to the police guild, they feel that the police department was underfunded and they needed additional staffing, so I think it's a fair budget, and I think that once we ramp up and get employees, then get everything. And I think that once we ramp up and get employees, then get everything in place. Maria is right, the next budget, we can reduce that amount of money. But even with all this conversation we're having, we're still, remember, we're still funding a deficit. And it's a deficit funding, it's just the way it is for right now. So that's my take on the police budget. And I'd be more than happy to add some more questions.
No, I have no more questions on that. I will have to say that I disagree with you, Chief Richardson, from my actual research and conversations with other cities and also with Chief Denny. So at that point, I guess we're going to agree to disagree.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Hill?
Yes, thank you. I think for me, in this budget, I think the key thing that I see here is that the Budget Committee, Council, our Finance Department has done a great job in really pulling together what the real numbers are going to look like as far as our revenue coming in in 2022. I think that's the critical thing, that we're not somehow making that bigger than it really is to somehow satisfy paying the bills. I think it's more real. The thing I see regarding the police budget is that money is going to be there. The fact that we're not going to spend that much money, I don't believe we are. My hopes are that if we move forward here in the end of this year, first part of next year, and we in fact are able to connect with the Sheriff Department, we won't be spending 2.163 billion dollars. We'll be pointing probably something closer to 1.3 to 1.5 million dollars with the amount of coverage and the security that we would be provided by the Sheriff Department. So this amount of money, 21163, doesn't really bother me from the standpoint of having that in our budget. Because I don't believe we're going to be spending that amount of money. Number one, we don't have it. And I don't think we're going to be able to spend it if we in fact go with the Sheriff Department to provide our city with the professional security that we need. Thank you.
And Dennis, just to, or Councilmember Hill, just to reiterate, I agree with you. I don't think we're going to spend it. But correct me if I'm wrong, everyone. If we say yes to this amount of money, the city can just spend that type of money, right? They can go ahead and go through without any type of approval or oversight. As far as that goes, because the money's been in there. I can remember some of the things that were approved on a budget and they didn't spend that year. And they said, well, it's already been approved, so they're just going, going to move forward with some things. So I think you see exactly what you said, since if we're in a deficit at that point in time, wouldn't it be best to kind of go on a lower amount? And then if the city needs more money for the police, to come back into a meeting and ask for that money?
Could you give an example of where you just mentioned that the city didn't budget for something, but they went ahead and spent the money?
No, it wasn't that they went ahead and spent the money. They didn't spend the money that year, and then the next year, they went to go buy it and said that it was already approved from last year's budget. It just hadn't been spent yet. That's what I'm saying.
What is that?
I'd have to go back through my notes, Mayor, and get you an actual thing on that. But yes, there was. Cover for the park, for one of them, that wasn't spent, that was brought up again two years ago. I believe, I don't know if the lawnmower was spent that year, and then the following year it was done, or maybe it was the sign.
Those are capital.
There's been, I got you, that's why I said, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, right?
Just trying to understand what you're talking about. I'm not trying to correct you, Councilmember Strobin. I'm trying to understand what you're doing. You're talking about capital expenditures. And as you know, the past couple of years, the council has agreed to postpone some of those acquisitions, you know, because of COVID and the uncertainties that we're dealing with. But, and some of those expenditures, again, our budgets are passed on an annual basis. So some of those capital expenditures that were not purchased in any one given year, they were rolled over to the next year, but not without the approval of the city council budgeting it again for the following year. So it's not like the city rolled those over without having council approval. Our budgets are approved on a capital, our capital projects are approved on an annual basis. And some of them get done, some of them don't get done. Again, a budget is just a spending plan. It's not anything that's carved in stone. We do the best we can to put the budgets together. We pull together all the numbers the best we can. We present it to council. And as we go through the year, we track it, we monitor it, and make adjustments where need be. So, but you're comparing capital projects to general fund expenditures, which are general operating expenditures. So I don't know if we're exactly comparing apples to apples there.
Okay, take that away then, that's fine. But if you guys had to come back and say, hey, we'd like to get an extra couple hundred thousand dollars, and the council would then approve or disapprove of that, isn't that better management at that point? Instead of just saying, hey, here's a blank check for 2.1 million dollars? I find that more fiscally responsible.
I find it more transparent to the citizens and taxpayers of the city of the center if we identify what we think the actual expenditures would be for a fully funded, fully staffed, less-centered police department. And that's what this budget represents. Now, we can discuss and debate whether or not that was, that's what it actually cost. But I know that Chief Richardson went into a great deal of detail when he was going through his budget process this year. He identified all the costs and expenditures that the city may incur to stand up a police department in the city of the center. That includes all the costs for current legislative mandates that are coming down from Olympia, plus all the current costs for dealing with the extremely difficult hiring situation that we're in, not just the center, but all police agencies in the state of Washington, quite frankly, across the country, that are experiencing it now to even bring new officers on board. So I do think that the budget reflects what the true cost would be for a fully funded, fully staffed police department. So to come in with a lower number, saying that, well, if it goes more than that, we're just going to go back to the council, ask for more money, I don't think that would be a good approach at all. I don't know what the rest of the council thinks about that, but that's what my thoughts are. And also, Chief, do you have anything to add to that?
You know, I don't want to get in the middle of a debate of who's, you know, who's got the right number. But I can tell you that I just looked at Moses Lake's police budget. Moses Lake Police Budget in 2019 was 5.6 million. 2020, it went up to 8.1 million. So I think that this is a fair budget, that we have to budget worst case. That's how you do it, you don't keep going back to council and asking for money. Because you want to have the money there to spend for anything you're going to anticipate. And I think that, although I understand where the council members coming from, I think that the 2.1 million dollar budget is a reasonable budget for where everybody wants this department to go. Because that's what I've heard consistently is people want a fully funded, fully equipped police department. And this is what it's going to take.
Chief, I'll send you that, the links to where I got the numbers for City of Moses Lake. It wasn't for the entire police budget, as I stated in the beginning. It was for seven new officers and vehicles added to their annual budget, which came to a cost of 1.2 million. And it covered the following. So I'll send you that link so you can see where the information came from.
Sure, thank you, appreciate it.
Good. Okay, any other questions or comments on Riley's presentation of the 2022 Center budget?
Mayor, this is Dennis. I think also, I'd like to again say that this, for those people who have been listening in the last several months here, a couple of several months at least, a couple of months, working on this budget. One of the things that worked very hard, particularly with Chief Richardson, it was the fact that we wanted to come up with a budget that in fact showed the city of the center. Let's say, let me back up here a bit. The citizens of the center have been crying out for having their own police department, fully on having their own police department. This answers that mail for that question. If somehow we came in with a 1.3 million dollars and the citizens are saying, we want a full-on police department, I would think they would come back to us and say, well, what are you guys doing? We're saying we want a full police department, and you're only going to give us half the money to do the job. Well, here we have the full job to do the job that there are certain citizens in our city who feel that that's the way we need to go. I don't personally believe that at all. But having it in the budget at least answers the mail. I really believe that if we do the job right, next year, we won't spend 2.1. We'll spend 1.3 to 1.5 million out of the police department. But even though it's there, doesn't mean we'll spend it. So I think we've pretty much answered what the citizens of the center have tried to have been telling us over and over and over, that they want a full police force, and this is what it's going to cost if that's what they're going to do, they're going to want to have.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. Any other council comments on the Riley's presentation for the 2022 budget?
Mayor, if I may, first of all, Riley, great presentation, it's very clear. I'll agree with Dennis on having this budget. I think this is a better idea to show a fully funded budget. And Mayor, I think you were on council at the time that we've had to come back mid-year and ask for more money when we had budgeting issues. I remember one painful conversation about when we needed a couple of police cars. And we had to make a budget amendment in the middle of the year, I think, to cover it. Again, if we don't spend this money, you know, it's adjusted at the end anyway in a budget amendment. So we want to, I think what this demonstrates is we have the ability to fully fund the police department, should we choose that. So if we couldn't put this budget together and found out we just couldn't afford it, I think that would have been a bad thing for the city. And this budget that's been put out here shows we can afford that fully funded department if that's the way that we decide to go. So I agree with this. And again, Riley, a good presentation, thank you.
Right. And I just may, if I may, Randy, just add to your comment there. Yes, the city can fully fund that department, but the way we can fully fund it is by using city reserves. And right now, you know, the city does still have reserves, just in the general fund reserves, north of $4 million. So there's no question we couldn't fully fund it. But we cannot continue to fully fund a police department like that indefinitely. We do have a structural deficit that we still need to deal with here in the city, in our general fund. And I agree with what you've just said, but really, in total transparency here, that's not something based upon what we're projecting for revenues going forward, that that's something that the city can continue to do indefinitely. The burn rate is way too high on our reserves to sustain that. So thank you for your comments, though, Randy. Any other comments? Questions, concerns?
No, I do want to give Riley kudos for that because, you know, his reports have been very thorough. It's very refreshing. So thanks again, Riley.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Riley, from me as well, thank you.
And Riley, I would just also like to recognize you this evening. This is Riley's first year as our senior accountant. This is the first year that he has actually put the budget together from beginning to end with Maria. And he's done a phenomenal job. As council members remember, Paul Lewis has historically worked with the city to help us put together our budget. Paul did it for the city of the center since I was on the city council, that goes back all the way to 2010. And I know Paul was doing it with the city before even that. So this is the first year that the city has actually prepared its budget from beginning to end without the use of consultants. And Maria and Riley have done a phenomenal job, along with the Budget Advisory Committee. I do want to thank our Budget Advisory Committee for all their input and hard work. We had three community members that participated in that, Jack Davis, Yana Sutter, and Mr. Steven Workman. So I appreciate all their efforts. And, you know, we have gone through a very deliberative process, like we do here with the budget. I'm confident that the numbers that are presented here this evening are sound numbers based on a great deal of input and research. And again, it's a spending plan. It's the best plan that we can come up with right now. And that's what will be advanced here later in the meeting for adoption. So Riley, Maria, great job, thank you.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on. The next staff report we have this evening will be from Chief Richardson for the police staff report. Chief?
Can I say something really quickly? I just, we've had some internet issues and we've lost some people that were in less-centered, including our deputy city clerk. And so if you are back on, Jess, if you could share the screen. Otherwise, I will share the screen and try to get Chief's report up. Okay, I guess she's not on, so I will share my screen, and then Chief can present.
It's definitely in the air tonight, Maria. I've had some issues myself.
Okay, thank you. I hope everybody can hear me, but I'm down in the Skamania, so the internet's not that great. But anyway, for October 2021 crime reports, we had seven reported crimes in October of 2021. We had two violations of court orders, it was a husband and wife. Each had one against one another. It's either husband and wife, boyfriend, girlfriend, but they ended up both getting arrested. We had two auto thefts, one burglary, and two other thefts. One was a theft from motor vehicle, and the other was a credit card theft. A sibling, a son used a credit card, a parent's credit card, and made some unauthorized charges. That compares to October of 2020, where we had 28, obviously, reported crimes. And that was eight assaults, the two burglaries, 11 thefts, one auto theft, two identity thefts, two vandalism, narcotics arrests. This goes with our common theme that we've seen all this year. Property crimes this year are up, that's auto thefts and thefts from vehicle, and also catalytic converters versus assaults, which are down substantially in our city this year. And again, it's more probably related to the fact people locked up together in the house because of COVID. You go to page two, where it talks about the crimes, the property crimes we're talking about. This just lists the property crimes. Obviously, a son took a victim's credit card, like I told you. There was a house under construction where a gentleman went in, and he was arrested for being inside the house for burglary. Ultimately, the developer didn't want prosecution. So although the suspect was actually arrested by a police officer who actually witnessed them there, the case was finally dropped because the victim didn't want prosecution. The auto theft is a car that was left running, that people ran into the grocery store, the gas station to purchase something, and when they came out, their car had been taken. The vehicle prow, that was under the bridge, there where the park was. While they were gone, somebody actually broke the window, but there was no loss. And then the auto theft was actually a locked vehicle. They had both the key fobs, and even though that was the case, somebody was able to drive off with it. And again, the next map is just a property map, kind of shows you the areas where we're having property crimes. This is a good month for us. I can tell you that November is going to be a bad month for us as far as auto thefts. And we can have a discussion about that anytime anybody wants. We can move down to arrest. We had these three arrests that I told you about. One was the burglary, and the others were the violations of court orders. And we go to calls for service. Our calls for service have been very consistent. If you look at especially July, August, September, October, they're within a couple of numbers of one another. Total calls for service. And again, if you look at the way the community initiated versus officer-initiated crimes are, they're again very similar throughout the summer. What is kind of interesting when you look at this is if you notice that we actually have more calls in the early spring, early winter, late winter time than we actually do in the summertime. But the calls for service generally are higher, and they peak, and then they drop down. And then they're pretty consistent, mostly how the rest of the year ends. As far as, again, this is October, the next slide comparison, October 2021 with October 2020. You can see that in all categories, it's actually gone down, either officer initiated, obviously. Officer initiated activities is proportional to the police staffing that you have. And then you have the community members that are calling in in the the red, and they're actually down too. My guess is because people are away from their homes and at work now, so they're not at home, and maybe that's reducing our calls. We move into reports by source and you can see that we're pretty consistent again through the summer. We average about, you know, anywhere between, you know, 30, 35 to 40 reports generally a month. That has gone down again substantially from the beginning of the year. But again, some of that is because of our less police officers they have, a less on view observations, especially narcotics, those kinds of things. Reports have actually gone down. And then just the community messaging like we do, please lock your cars, especially when you're parking them overnight. You know, 90, 95% of our calls are cars where there's things that are stolen is actually unlocked vehicles. So most of the time, people aren't locking their cars because they feel like people are coming along and pulling on doors. And if you see the video, when they pull on a door that's locked, they walk away, they go to the next one's unlocked. So lock your cars at night. We have a couple of complaints about people letting their dogs run out early morning hours off a leash where they're just letting them out of the house, probably while they're getting ready for work. And we've had some complaints about people. Just remember that if your dogs are out, they've got to be on a leash with certain exceptions. But, you know, just please be aware of the fact that there are other people out there jogging or going out to their cars and they have these stray dogs that they run into. We're talking about catalytic converters. And if you need a side job, we had a good, did some research and looked at that. And regallium, which is one of the metals, metals that's in the catalytic converter back in 2019, was about $2,300 an ounce. It's up to about 13,000, over $13,000 an ounce now. So that's what's driving some of the stuff of catalytic converters is just the how valuable the metals are in there. It's shot up so much and it's based on economics. It's a pretty good, easy theft to commit. You can take a catalytic converter off a car, less than a minute. Saw it off and drop it and take it with you. And there's a pretty good return for your investment. And finally, auto thefts, again, auto thefts are up everywhere. Los Center, they're up 50% over last year. Ritz Field's up 45%, CCSO is up 35%. And if you look at the state of Washington, they're up 8%, which is about 1,200 vehicles. About 1,200 more cars stolen last year, this year than last year. Many of them are stolen just for people to drive around. We we have, we know who's stealing a lot of our cars in Los Center. We have a suspect information. We have an information where they live. We have information where we think they're dropping these cars. And so we have passed that information on to the Clark County Sheriff's Department because it's all this person lives in an incorporated county. And another reason for the auto thefts is parts. There's a part shortage for cars. So you see some people are actually taking these cars and in some cases taking the parts off them because of the supply chain issues we have with everything else. It's cheaper to buy parts off the the black market as opposed to trying to wait for something to get delivered to your house. So those are things that are happening and, you know, you might want to, I know it's expensive, but if the best thing you can do besides locking your car is maybe get some kind of GPS alarm with a kill switch or something like that. It makes it more difficult for people to steal a car, but also ensures you get more recoverable vehicles. A lot of the vehicles that we have in our city that people are just driving them, they're just actually driving them and dumping them right in the area of the center or Portland. That's the two places that a lot of our stolen vehicles end up. So that's my report as far as crimes. And I have a couple of other things to talk about. But does anybody have any questions regarding the October crime report? If if not, I'll move on. So we want to talk about the Sheriff's Department and a contract with the Sheriff's Department. We had two workshops. We were ready to bring something to the council tonight. Last week, early last week, the county reached out to me and said that they didn't feel comfortable signing a contract right now. I've had numerous discussions with the command staff and the leadership in the Sheriff's Department. They've been very wonderful, very gracious. They understand our predicament. But they don't want to sign a any kind of contract until they have a clear picture of what their recruitment process is going to be like in the in the pipeline. And the other thing that's impacting them, like everybody else, is everybody's waiting for LNI and the governor's office to determine whether or not he can mandate local employees to have vaccinations. You saw what happened with WSP when they were mandatory, they had mandatory evacuations or back, I can't even say it now. I'm starting to talk. The vaccinations, they lost about 100 and some employees. And the county is concerned that if the local, there's a local mandate by the governor that we would all lose professional employees, including their, some of the deputies in the law enforcement branch in the jail, which makes it even harder for them to staff a contract. So I have had conversations. We're going to revisit it in January, February, see how they they feel then. So the long term solution, I still believe the best solution long term is with a contract with the Sheriff's Department. They can recruit and retain employees much better than the Los Center can. They have more opportunity for their employees. And that's just my recommendation. In the meantime, we've got to decide and we're going to, we're going to have some discussions about what do we do in the meantime, short term solution, whether it's ramping up our police department or something else, we're still going to have the same recruitment issues that everybody else is having. The pool is not very deep and there's not a lot of applicants coming in right now. And I think we need to recognize the fact that if you want really good quality employees, you're going to have to really hunt. And you're going to have to offer them things like a hiring bonus, those kinds of things. So that's kind of where we are right now. Does anybody have any questions regarding that? If not, I will move on. My final thing, I just want to thank Councilmember Hill and Keeler for your service to the city, for your, the opportunity to meet and have discussions with you and your willingness to reach out and contact me in person and have conversations regarding the police department and the details. And just be thoughtful about that. And I appreciate that. And I appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay. We do have one final staff report this evening. It'll be the legislative agenda. And Mr. Jeff Swanson will be presenting that this evening to the council. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council and Clerk or suggestor Maria. I wonder if you can make me the presenter so I can put a document up on the screen and walk through it. Okay. Hopefully, everybody can see that.
We can.
Okay, so I'll just go ahead and adjust my screen here just a little bit. There we go. I'll go ahead and just kind of walk through this. Every year, we put together a list of legislative priorities as we approach the upcoming state legislative session. And so typically, what we do is we take the prior years, we review where we were successful and where we have items that need additional advocacy and we update the docket. So first off, on our 22, 2022 legislative priorities is the Breezy Creek culvert replacement East Fourth Street widening project. And we've, we already received 1.5 million from the 2019 legislature to do the design and all the pre-construction work, like permitting and so on on this project. The city has also received a rural service transportation block grant of just over $1 million that will be available to us in 2024 to fund construction activities. Our current estimate for funding construction is $11.6 million. And so that is what we're advocating for. I would just mention that with the passage of the massive infrastructure bill here in the last week or so, that we expect there, there should be a large amount of funds available through the federal government that'll flow through the state that will help fund projects throughout the state in cities on state routes, freeways and so on. And so I think there's a lot of optimism about getting money for transportation projects. I know the state will work to leverage those federal dollars and state dollars and stretch those as far as it can go to get as many projects funded and complete as possible. So that is our top priority capital project. And top priority transportation project right now is to get the funding for construction. We had two capital requests, request for the capital budget. And in the 2021 legislative session, 1.24 million was appropriated for the city hall consolidation project and tenant improvements related to that. And $515,000 was appropriated to do renovations on the community center commercial kitchen, which is the, you know, the appliances, the ventilation hoods, and to do parking lot repairs and other kind of replacement around that building. So those two requests were funded funded in this last session. Kind of the next up are two key transportation projects. One that is development has been occurring out on Northwest Pacific Highway. But there's a need to upgrade that transportation facility from a rural roadway, two lane roadway configuration to more of an urban complete streets transportation facility. And whether that's with off-street path for pedestrians and bicyclists. You know, we need to go through a survey and design process on it, permitting process, and then fund construction. We have very, very high level estimates of what this project costs. And so we're currently putting a number of 25 million on that. You know, seen significant inflation in both materials and labor. So, you know, we'll need to, we'll hopefully get a portion of that funded so that we can begin the pre-construction work for that project. And then, of course, we'll need to just update every year as we pursue funds for construction, the market for labor and materials for these projects. Likewise, Aspen Avenue, West 10th Street, repairs and reconstruction. Those streets have gotten beat up for a number of years because of heavy truck diversion off of the interstate system through the city, out Pacific Highway, and then back onto the freeway system at Woodland because of a weight limited bridge over the East Fort Lewis River. So we're currently estimating about $3.5 million to do repairs and reconstruct portions of those roadways to replace the damage. And this again is one that when we talk to legislators, we want to let them know that, you know, because of a lack of proactive funding for the state bridge system, and that's a state responsibility, that it has placed an undue burden on a local community and on our local road system because of those traffic divertments. So, you know, I think we we can reasonably expect them to fund the lion's share, if not the full cost of those repairs. The other item here, next item, is that the city generally, every year that this, that we put this document together, endorses the Association of Washington Cities Legislative Priorities. And I can put that up on the screen here in just a moment and kind of walk through those just so you're familiar with them. Regional priorities at, let's see, was it the last meeting, I think, we endorsed the Clark County Transportation Alliance 2022 policy statement. It's either the last meeting, meeting before, I don't recall. And so the the groups that run the Clark County Transportation Alliance, it's a, it's a loosely affiliated group of public agencies, businesses, the Columbia River Economic Development Council, Identity Clark County, and the Regional Transportation Council is likewise involved in putting this policy statement together. They will, they're they're collecting all the agencies endorsements and logos and they'll send us, I believe this next month, they'll send us a final document that'll have the City of Los Center's logo attached to it along with all the other endorsing businesses, organizations and agencies. And so that'll be included in the in the legislative agenda. Broadband access, bringing this one back. So there have been some investments in broadband through the last legislative session. We want to continue to encourage policy and appropriations that will continue to increase access to broadband throughout the state. And we join the Porta Ridge Field, the City Ridge Field and other regional partners in that request. Last year, we asked for support of the Porter Ridge Fields IT3 Discovery Center. This was partially funded. I believe they received $1.5 million appropriation through the capital budget. And so we're appreciative of the legislature's support of that request. I believe their request was for a little over $5 million, five or $6 million. And so there is an unfunded amount. And so we would, you know, express continued support in this project at the state level to fund worker training in industry and technology and partnering with our K-12 system and our higher ed system here as well as employers who are looking for workers. Any questions about this list of legislative priorities that I can answer?
Jeff, this is Dennis. My question, I guess, one of this is the fact that receiving the the monies that for the Fourth Street as well as the New City Hall and the Community Center, how do we acknowledge our thanks to our legislators for what they've done on our behalf on in obtaining those funds? What's our process there?
You know, if we weren't in a pandemic, we'd probably have some kind of little ribbon cutting or reception or something like that. And so I think once it is deemed safe to gather in groups again, I think it would be fully appropriate for the community to invite current and former legislators who supported us to come to the new city hall, for example, to come to the community center for some kind of reception, you know, coffee and cookies and little speeches and hugs and kisses and grins. That's usually the way we acknowledge that.
In the meantime, before that happens, do we send on kind of a letter from the City of Thanks and and also then anticipation of coming together at a later time to do a formal thank you and presentation?
We do, we do send notes, usually, you know, during session when the budgets are approved. I personally reach out and express appreciation to legislators who supported our requests. And and I have indicated that, you know, at some point, it'd be nice to get together, look at the projects when they're completed and, you know, celebrate the success together. So, yeah, we're pretty, pretty on the spot about doing that. Once we have a win, we express our appreciation for that.
Appreciate. Thanks, Jeff. Appreciate that. That's important, I think.
Absolutely, yeah. Other questions about this document? Okay.
Jeff, I just have a comment. I'd like to make here a few comments. First of all, to Dennis's point, yes, Dennis, both Jeff and to our legislators on Reagan. Clerk, we're getting Clerk, we're getting some back north here. Is there anything we can do to correct that? Can we mute everybody? So, yeah, Dennis, there is a, an ongoing constant dialogue with our legislators in the city. So, and we do hope to have more formal, you know, like Jeff pointed out, ribbon cuttings and inviting our legislators here to La Center to, you know, recognize them for all their hard work.
That'd be great.
And that will be happening. And Jeff started his presentation this evening by saying this legislative priority is something the city always does. And I just want to add to that. That that's something, this is something that the city has always done since Jeff has started with the city. This is not something that took place prior to Jeff's involvement with the city. And it's clear from this document that the city has enjoyed many successes as a result of Mr. Swanson's hard work and what he has really been able to put together here in just the last couple of years in achieving these appropriations from the city. It's impressive, to say the least. Just the Fourth Street widening project, the way that was, Jeff picked that up, he ran with it, we got the appropriation for the initial study. We've subsequently got more grants as a result of that work. And it was my understanding and talking with our legislators that that project was actually in the transportation bill. Had the state legislator acted on that this year, which we all know that state legislature did not bring forward a transportation bill, but that project was in there. And had they voted on it, you know, like we heard, we would be have, we'd have those funds right now. But I do want to make it clear that the results of the grants that we're getting right now, and I'm talking about the Department of Commerce grants for, you know, the improvements to the New City Hall and the improvements to our community center, along with these capital projects, transportation projects. It is the result of Jeff Swanson's hard work and the relationships that he has, not with just the legislators, but the staff of the legislators. And we all know that the heavy lifting and all the work really is done for, for the government process at the staff level. And fortunately, Jeff has great relations. Okay, well, I'm sorry if you can't hear me, but.
We can hear you, Mayor.
Okay. Anyway, so I just want to recognize Jeff for all his hard work and efforts. And I'm confident that as we move forward with our legislative priorities and some of these significant projects with Jeff on board and continue to work with the city and the support of the city council and city staff, that will continue to bring some of these projects home. So I just want to recognize you for that, Jeff, and thank you for everything that you do.
Mayor, I really appreciate that. And if I can just follow on with a couple of comments along those lines. Because as many of you know, I do work in other communities and I have been an employee of other jurisdictions within Clark County. And one of the things that was really surprising to me when I first started working for La Center was I went to the legislature with a request for the East Fourth Street widening for a million and a half dollars to do the pre-construction work. And it just went through so easily. Usually you have to go and have bite after bite after bite at the apple to get your request through. And so I was trying to figure out what that was. And I have a couple of legislators who are friends, former legislator who's, you know, I would consider a personal friend. And they offered some input to me. And of course Lloyd Halverson, who I've worked with, has shared some of his many years of wisdom. And the difference was is that agencies that I was working for or with before La Center, they had councils where there was a lot of division and a lot of kind of toxic, I would call toxic stuff going on. And those agencies continue to have toxic stuff going on. And so, you know, legislators don't want to wade in the midst of controversial issues and work with bodies who are split. So, you know, the La Center Council has been united and has worked well together. Has done a good job of advocating for the city and telling this, the story of the city to our elected officials at the state and federal level.
We are muted completely from all this presentation. Please have it fixed. Thank you.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't understand that, but I'll, I, I guess the upshot is when we work together as staff and as a council, that these are the kinds of successes that we can enjoy. And it's just been, it's been pretty easy to get these things through. So I really hope that that continues, especially with the opportunities that are coming to us with the significant amount of infrastructure dollars that are being made available. We have kind of what I would consider a once in a generation, probably once in every two or three generation opportunity to really move the ball forward on infrastructure needs in the city. And so I hope that, you know, as a community, as a council, as staff, that we can all work very closely together as a team to advocate for the needs of our community and get some of the tax dollars back that we send to Washington DC and to, and bring those to bear in our communities. I will stop sharing my screen here for just a second. And I will put up another document here. This will cooperate with me. And so hopefully now you can see legislative priorities. And I'll just briefly walk through these. They're advocating for cities. And one issue that has frequently come up over the last many, many years has to do with the Public Works Assistance Account. And cities through utility taxes send money to Olympia. A portion of that is supposed to go into the Public Works Assistance Account to provide low interest loans back to jurisdictions to fund things like water and wastewater projects, road projects in the line. And over the last many years, the legislature has either underfunded that program or has swept the funds entirely from that program to shore up the general fund. And so AWC, which is a great organization that advocates for the needs of cities across the state of Washington, has been tireless in working on infrastructure funding and in particular defending the viability of the Public Works Assistance Account. This next item passed a transportation package that was, it's been discussed for the last couple of years. The last major package was passed in 2015, connecting Washington. And so with the money through the federal infrastructure bill, I think we fully expect that there will be a transportation package coming out of this next session of the legislature. And again, I think significant opportunities for the City of La Center in such a package. Finally, Transportation Benefit District. This is something that some jurisdictions have used. It's a local tab fee increment and they use that to bond against, to leverage grant dollars and to do preservation work like crack sealing and slurry sealing. So this is a tool that was challenged through some of the things that Tim Eiman was doing, if you remember some of his initiatives. And so it has gone through the courts and but it's essentially the ability to leverage Transportation Benefit District and use that as a financial resource is a tool that remains available to cities. And AWC is asking the legislature to do some things to shore that up and support it. One more thing I will show you. And this, if you're curious, you can go to AWC's website and you can find their 2022 city legislative priorities. And in addition, they have some other policy issues that they are working on, including law enforcement use of force and the Blake decision. Those have been big issues and the chief is very familiar with those and can speak to how the legislative actions in Olympia and how the Blake decision has affected the provision of law enforcement at an operational level. The Open Public Meetings Act and frankly, the Public Records Act, that there are continued efforts to improve on what are called sunshine laws in the state and make those work better because there are some abuses of those. And then some growth management stuff and, you know, preserving, protecting revenue options. There's a lot of discussion going on around tax structure in the state. And finally culverts, fish blocking culverts is really an unfunded mandate that's faced by state. So trying to find ways to address those policy issues. If. Oh, I, I noticed that we have some of our council members elect who are listening to the meeting. And so I strongly encourage them to log on to wahcities.org and peruse the website. Get familiar with the legislative priorities of the Association of Washington Cities. And also review and avail themselves of the training materials for new council members that are available through AWC. AWC has been holding virtual events. I think they're starting to maybe do some hybrid events, conferences and so on. Great organization, great resource. And of course, in terms of furthering our legislative priorities, they've done a great job in the past. And so with that, I will take any questions that you may have for me.
Mr. Swanson, I had a quick question regarding the last slide you just showed from AWC. And there was a mention of property tax. If I was, is that in regard to the 1% limit?
Yes.
So, okay, I would like to learn more about that at some point, but we don't need to talk about it tonight.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, in, in short, currently there's a 1% councilmatic limit on property tax increases. This is the structural deficit that we talked about frequently when we talk about budgets. Because revenue can only increase at a 1% rate and your costs are increasing at greater than a 1% rate. And so, you know, you, you basically have a deficit that is imposed upon you by this structure and the state tax structure. And so they're, they're working to try to at least change that to an inflation adjusted figure instead of being a 1% limit.
Thank you for that. That's heartening.
It would help. Any other questions? Okay, I think one of the things before I move on, I think, Mayor, if it's all right, I would like to get sort of a head nod from all of the council members that you are okay with us proceeding with and distributing this list of legislative priorities that's on the city's letter. That would be the first document that I walk through. So I don't know if we could just each one kind of say what you think and if you're supportive and I'll move forward.
Jeff, this is Liz. Thank you for your report. Once again, very thorough and I concur. I think what you presented is definitely what we need to move forward with at the legislative level and take the, that message forward, especially as you said. You know, this is a, once, you know, these types of opportunities don't come around very often that we have that amount of money that's, that's designated for infrastructure and specific types of transportation projects that we could certainly benefit from. So I, I think we need to charge ahead as we have been in the last few years and continue to build those relationships at the legislative level.
Thank you.
Jeff, this is Randy. I got a parallel with Liz says. I think you're going in the right direction, things that the city needs. And with the federal infrastructure bill that was just passed, I think it's best that we get our tin cup out there and see if we can get enough to take care of our little projects here in town. Trucks are beating up our highway something fierce. And that's something that's going to just cost the city more down the road. So if we can get any grant money for that, that'd be great and try to preserve our, our highways. Anyway, but you're going in the right direction. I support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams.
Jeff, this is.
I concur with both of them. Yeah, I agree with Randy, what he just said as well, as far as, you know, closed mouths don't get fed. So, yeah.
Jeff, this is Dennis. I, I also agree. I think sooner we can get this into our local legislators' hands, Hoff and, and Vic and, and of course Rivers is not going to be around much longer, but get into her hands so she can pass it on. But others that, if we can get on top of that before someone else, I'm all favor, I'm all in favor of it. So I say let's, let's proceed.
Okay, thank you.
I have nothing left to add that hasn't been said. Please go forward, Mr. Swanson.
Thank you, Councilmember Keeler. And just in closing, Councilmember Keeler, Councilmember Harold, it's been a pleasure working with both of you in your capacities on the council. So best wishes to both of you. Thank you. Thank you. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Great report. Appreciate all your hard work. We'll continue to move forward. We do have a public hearing in ordinance this evening for the 2022 La Center Budget. And Maria will be presenting that this evening.
Good evening again, council. And I do want to say something before I start that we will have a public hearing tonight and open it up for citizens to speak. But other than that, citizens are not to unmute themselves and speak during the meeting. All right, I want to thank Riley again for his presentation earlier. Tonight, we will conduct a public hearing on adopting the 2022 budget. The budget was made available to city council and the public on September 22nd. And then the proposed budget per the RCW was put on the city's website on November 1st. Riley updated us on the small changes from the preliminary budget to the proposed budget. And as Mayor has said, I also want to thank the Budget Advisory Committee, which he has named already. And I also want to point out that the mayor does serve on that Budget Advisory Committee. Also thanks to Riley and the department heads for their contribution to the budget process. The budget development process included two city council work sessions and two presentations during a council meeting to review the revenue estimates, the baseline and final expenses and the preliminary and proposed budgets. In addition, the Budget Advisory Committee met four times. At the last meeting, we held a public hearing and the council approved the 2022 revenue sources from the proposed budget as well as the property tax levy. The overall budget for 2022 is just over 11.8 million dollars. That is divided between the operating funds and capital projects. The general fund budget is 5.1 million. There's 1.8 million for the sewer operating fund and just over $250,000 for the stormwater operating fund. For the capital projects, we have 1.4 million dollars for the capital project fund. And then 1.3 million dollars from the impact fee fund and just over $900,000 from the sewer capital fund totaling about four. And just over $900,000 from the sewer capital fund totaling about $4 million in capital projects. The proposed budget does call for the use of reserves in the amount of $834,000. Of course, as you're aware and we've discussed, if we are able to get a contract with CCSO, that will be greatly reduced. Also, we need to point out that it does include the use of our $475,000 in ARPA or American Recovery Plan Act funds that we will receive next year. The beginning reserve balance to start the year will be $5.4 million and will finish the year at $4.5 million in reserves. The capital project reserves will start the year at $5.6 million and end the year just shy of $6.5 million. Some highlights are that, once again, we are using conservative growth assumptions. And we are anticipating growth below the 2021 levels. And this year, we have issued an estimated 90 building permits for single family homes and we are anticipating 80 next year. In addition, there is a 144 multifamily unit project that has been approved. As far as staffing goes, we are adding one employee to the Public Works Department, as Riley mentioned. And as we've talked about, have proposed a full staffing for the police department. Once again, there is no increase in monthly sewer rates. We will also conduct two studies this year. One is to evaluate the streetlights on La Center Road. And one to evaluate the conditions and usability of our parks, trails and access points to the waterways. And this will help us meet the needs of our growing community. And you'll also see in the staff report some targeted infrastructure improvements, including paving on La Center Road. Completing the design for the East Four Street Breezy Creek Culvert. And as Jeff has mentioned, we've already been awarded a $1 million grant for construction. Designing a pedestrian pathway along Pacific Highway and also a new park in the Riverside subdivision. And then lastly, we will renovate the community center thanks to a grant received from the Department of Commerce. And if we can pull up the exhibit ones, scroll down to that. And you guys have seen this and Riley's pointed this out today. But one thing we I want to point out is our impact fees, our school impact fees of just over $425,000. Just a reminder that those are in and out. And next year, our impact fee balance will end the year right where about where we started. And as Riley mentioned, we do have a couple of new or three new vehicles, two for the police department, one for Public Works, which shows up on our vehicle equipment fund. We will also, as we discussed, be purchasing the new membrane next year for our wastewater treatment plant. And so the staff recommendation would be that the city council approve the ordinance 2021-14 adopting your 2022 budget. Deputy City Clerk, if you could scroll to the bottom of the staff report where it has the recommendation.
Thank you, Maria. So this will be a public hearing, but before I open the public hearing, are there any questions or comments for Maria on her presentation or any discussion amongst the council members?
And Riley is on as well to assist.
Thank you for that, Maria.
Great, great. Maria, I wanted to say thank you. That was a very nice, great presentation.
I second that.
Thank you. We try to make it as straightforward as possible.
I'd like to thank both of you for the the detail that you provided in the reports throughout the budgeting process. It's been very thorough and no matter what question we've thrown at you, you've been able to scramble and get the answers to us that we needed to really move ahead and and put the necessary thought into coming up with the the end budget proposal. So thank you very much for your hard work.
Thank you.
This looks great. Thank you very much for the hard work.
Thanks, Councilmember Williams.
Okay. So I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. And again, this evening, what's in front of the council is ordinance number 2020, 2021-14. An ordinance adopting the budget for the city of La Center, Washington, fiscal year ending December 31, 2022. So it's right now 8:25 and I will open the public hearing if there's any residents or citizens that want to comment on the proposed budget. Please state your name and address, and if you could limit your comments to three minutes.
I'm Mayor Thurton Sally Alkazem. As I said in my letter, I'm not real clear on why this budget is being voted on tonight. Why can't wait two more weeks, which they did last year. It was voted on, I don't quote me, but I'm gonna say early December. But that leaves some squash room for me. But why not wait for two weeks when we have two newly elected city council members that can provide input on the budget?
Well, they're here this evening. So far as I can tell, at least they were here earlier. So if they want to have any put input on the city budget, they can do it right now, Sally.
Well, they can do that as citizens, but not as council members. And I, last I looked, I think there was a difference, but as council members, they can vote for or against it. As citizens, they can only say, I agree or I don't agree. But as council members have, I would hope, a whole lot more weight than I do as a citizen.
You said comments, so I, they can comment, but to your point, Sally, and I appreciate your, what your comment is. It's just that the city of La Center, we've been working on this budget now for several months. And Maria did a great job of outlining the process that we've been through. It's been a very deliberative process. Current sitting city council members have all worked on this budget from the very beginning to the conclusion where we are this evening. So I think they're the best prepared to adopt the budget. You know, I don't think it's untypical for city councils to pass budgets in November. I know the city of Cam is just passed theirs last night. So, you know, again, like I mentioned earlier, this is the first year that the city council has really, I should say, the city staff has pretty much done all the budget work in-house. Riley and Maria have done a great job. We haven't had to rely on a consultant. So I think that shortened the process somewhat. And so, no, I think now's the appropriate time to do that. Maria, do you have anything?
I can agree or disagree, I guess. That's what I'm gonna have to do because I don't agree with that. I know other people do not as well. But that's, you know, I'm not in charge, so we'll just go with the flow for now.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Mayor, one comment on the timing of hearing on a municipal budget. And that is that state law requires code city, which is what La Center is, to hold its hearing on the adoption of the budget not later than 25 days before the close of the fiscal year, which for us would be December 31 is to close the fiscal year, going 25 days back is December 7. And so I don't think we're having another council meeting before December 7. So that is at least a reason that the it was necessary to schedule this hearing tonight.
We do have one on December 1.
Okay, no, we, right. Okay. But thank you for that.
Mayor, if I could give a question or or your point, please. Maria, in your, as you did a very good job of presenting the ordinance, but in your staffing
Excuse me, sir. Please give me your name and address.
My name is James Irish, 1653 East Heritage Loop, La Center, Washington. And my question is from Maria is, in the staffing, now as you bring forward the comment or the statement that in addition to propose, it reflects a current policy of a fully staffed police department. That does not say, or is meant to say that you are pushing for a contract with the with the sheriffs. It should say that we're gonna have the money available for a fully staffed police department. Is that correct or am I off base?
It was a little hard to understand what you're saying, but we have proposed what the budget would be for a fully staffed police department. At this point, I don't know what will happen with CCSO. So if we go with a fully staffed police department, it will be $2.1 million for that first year. Does that answer your question, Mr. Irish?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Any other public comments this evening from any residents? I'll just give it one more minute here in case someone is struggling to unmute themselves or. Okay, so at 8:30, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you for your comments. I'll turn it back over to the city council for any additional discussion or questions that they may have of the city staff.
Mayor, this is Dennis. In regards to the comment regarding trying to move this out. I'm very pleased with the fact that the existing council and the budget committee, along with Maria and Riley and you and Mayor yourself, have worked very tirelessly over the last several months to work out the details of this budget. This is not something that's been pushed through quickly. There's been a lot of work and a lot of hard work done to get to this point. To somehow think that three new council members coming on within a week could somehow understand and absorb all that's been accomplished and decided over these last several months could be done, I I think is would not be possible. And so I I really do appreciate the fact that the council and new mayor and the staff have done a wonderful job here in pulling this together and the detail that it is. And I think it truly represents what what needs to happen as we move into 2022.
Thank you. Any other discussion, council? There's no other discussion or questions if I could have a motion?
Mayor, I moved to approve ordinance 2021-14, adopting the budget for the city of La Center for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2022, and a policy with regard to fund transfers.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 2021-14, adopting a budget for the city of La Center for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2022, and a policy with regard to fund transfers. Clerk, it's an ordinance. Could I please get a roll call?
Councilmember Keeler?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Strobin?
No.
Councilmember Servini?
Yes.
The ordinance is approved with four yes votes and one opposing vote. So I want to thank you again, city staff, Maria, Riley, great job. Thank you, city council. And I appreciate So we have one item remaining on the agenda this evening. It is an executive session. The executive session is to discuss potential litigation with the city of attorney and to consider the acquisition of real estate when public knowledge regarding such consideration would likely cause an increase to price. So council, you were given an additional link for a go to meeting link at the beginning of the meeting. We will close out of this. The clerk will keep the, this link will be returning after the executive session. And I understand that there will be an action taken at the end of the executive session. And Bronson, I was thinking maybe about 20 minutes for the executive session?
Yes, Mayor, I think that should be sufficient.
So it's 8:35 right now. So sometime around 8:55, we'll be back in session. And again, there will probably be an action taken after the executive session. So council, if you could close out of this. Open up the link. We'll go into the executive session and we'll return back to the
This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you, clerk. Okay, so we're back from our executive session. We're in open session. And council, I'll turn it back over to you.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion to move authorizing the mayor and the city attorney be authorized to take the steps necessary to acquire the tracks and easements dedicated to the city and the Riverside Estates subdivision from the receiver for a nominal price not to exceed $5,000.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Authorize the mayor and the city attorney to be authorized to take the city steps necessary to acquire the tracks and easements dedicated to the city in the Riverside Estates subdivision from the receiver or price not to exceed $5,000. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Thank you. And then we still have another motion that needs to be made. Councilmember Servini?
Mayor, I move that we authorize the city attorney to take the steps necessary to enforce the letter of credit issued for the Riverside Estates subdivision, including a lawsuit if necessary.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the city attorney to take the steps necessary to enforce a letter of credit issued for the Riverside Estates subdivision, including a lawsuit if necessary. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? Again, motion carries unanimously. Okay, thank you, Bronson. Thank you, city council. That pretty much concludes our city council meeting for this evening. If I could get a motion to adjourn.
So move.
It's been moved and seconded. It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the city council meeting. All favor, say aye.
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 See you later, council.
Okay. Hey, everyone. Thank you. Have a safe and safe and happy Thanksgiving.
And same to you, Mayor.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.